Excellent, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is October 3rd and we are meeting for our city council study session. And we will start with a council review of agendas. Now, first, we're going to start with a roll call. How about that? I'm Melissa Youssef, Mayor for the City of Durango, and I'll go to the left.
Jessica Buhl, Mayor Pro Tem.
Dave Woodruff, Durango City Council.
Olivier Bosman, City Councilor.
Mark Morgan, City Attorney.
Bob Braemer, Acting City Manager.
Bill DeYasi, City Council.
And we have Ben Florin, Chief Deputy Clerk.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and lots in the staff. Thank you all for joining us. Again, October 3rd, City Council Study Session, and we will start now with a review of our agenda. I don't think we have one for October 17th, or do we? We just have one for November 7th. And on that one, just so you guys know, is update on multimodal transportation plan, community survey results. And then also discussion and reconciliation of the city manager's proposed budget. And this is for November 7th. Any thoughts or comments on this agenda coming up? Me neither. So we're all good with that? All right. Okay, I think we can just jump right in then to our community support recommended block grants. Do we have a someone who from city staff who will be taking us through this? There they come. If you could announce yourself when you join us at the table, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council, Devon Schmidt, our Chief Financial Officer. And today we have our grants contract specialist, Marissa Rup, who is going to be working with the community support user agencies to take you through what their requests are for the 2024 budget. I did want to make one note on the agenda document as it relates to the Humane Society. There's a note in there that does say that the full amount was included in the city manager's proposed budget. However, that should say that their full amount was included in this packet for your consideration today. In the budget is actually the lower dollar figure. And so I just wanted to make that one adjustment to the agenda.
Great, thank you. And are the, what are the amount, the changes to the amount?
Sure. So in the agenda document, you'll see for the Humane Society Animal Protection Contract, that's listed at 365,000. In the budget that you received on Friday, the animal shelter is listed at 144,000. And then the animal control contract is listed at 264,000. In the document, it has it at 344,000.
Okay. Any questions from council on that? Do you get that? Okay, thanks so much for that clarification. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Well, I'll turn it over to Marissa and she can take it from here. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Councilors. Like Devon had said, I am Marissa Rup, the new Grants and Contract Specialist. And I will be introducing the nonprofit presenters for the 2024 Community Support Recommended Block Grants. First up, we have, on behalf of Access Health, their Detox Acute Treatment Unit and the Co-Responders Program. Is Sarada Leavenworth.
Okay, now, thank you, council and staff for having us here today. As Marissa said, thank you, Marissa. I'm joined by Commander Nick Stacy and Molly Rodriguez. And we'll be talking about, we went ahead and combined our various things into one segment with you. So we thought we would talk a little bit about the Withdrawal Management Program, the Acute Treatment Program, and our new Durango Integrated Healthcare Program. And then pause for questions around those and then move on to core. Kind of two very interesting worlds and giving you a little question and answer time in the middle.
And I'm just going to take a second to also introduce, make sure that everyone knows that you are Sarada Leavenworth. Sarada Leavenworth. It's just so, because people often listen and I want them to be able to make sure that they know who's speaking.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, I'm our Vice President of Administration with Access Health System. Thank you so much. So just a little overview about Access. For those who aren't as familiar with us, we do a broad range of services here for City of Durango residents and our five county region. Often we're thought of as mental health and substance use provision of services, which is what we do. But we also do a range of medical, dental, pharmacy, support services, and extensive crisis services. So a broad range for, for our local residents. And as I mentioned, today we'll really focus on our withdrawal management, usually known as our detox facility. So to start with, talking a little bit about detox, we started detox in 2006 with a close partnership with City of Durango. So we all banded together, City of Durango, La Plata County, Access, and then municipalities and counties across our five county region to create the detox facility together and create a resource that we could all use for our residents across our five counties. At the detox facility, we do 24/7, 365 days a year withdrawal management for our, our residents here in City of Durango. And Molly very gracefully just reminded me to go to the next slide. That is one thing that I'm not great at with PowerPoints, but we do have a next slide for you. There you go. So with detox, thank you, Molly. Fifty percent or more of the folks we serve at detox are City of Durango residents. And detox is supported by an intergovernmental agreement. So City of Durango, Fort Lewis College, Ignacio, Mercy Hospital, we all band together to support that facility and the services we do there. Moving on to the ATU. The ATU also started at the same time in 2006. And again, that was through that extensive partnership with City of Durango and our surrounding regions. The acute treatment unit is the only inpatient psychiatric care unit in southwest Colorado. And really that core hub for 24/7, 365 crisis psychiatric and mental health care. That's also where our crisis services are based out of. And again, the acute treatment unit is an option for City of Durango residents to keep that stabilization local. So we do everything we can to intervene before someone reaches that crisis level. But then when we need to intervene, we're able to do that care locally rather than have folks have to go out of area to Pueblo or another location, which has proven to not be nearly as effective for folks than being treated locally. So with those, with that perspective, I wanted to give Molly a chance to talk about those two programs a little bit. And then we'll talk a little bit about the Durango Integrated Healthcare Project.
Hi, everyone. Some of you I've met before and some of you are new to me. I'm Molly Rodriguez. I'm a Licensed Professional Counselor. I've been employed with Access Health System for 11 years and have been primarily working within the crisis services realm. I am happy to be here today to talk about these three programs and specifically at this point, Withdrawal Management in our acute care unit. A lot of people don't have that opportunity to see how people navigate through our systems. And for Withdrawal Management and ATU, there's a really close tie between the services being provided based on the needs of an individual. Both are very much crisis-related services. They're opportunities for people to have a safe place to land under the circumstances of their individual crisis. Withdrawal Management is very much as it sounds. It is a withdrawal program that is intended to have a place for people to safely withdraw from substances and then receive care that includes a lot of case management services and support services that motivate treatment. We know that we cannot force someone into making changes. And sometimes people need multiple opportunities to receive support before that change can happen. In addition, we know that substance use and behavioral health issues or mental health issues are siloed between one another. And sometimes they're co-occurring, as we would say. And in having those services connected with one another, we have the opportunity to serve both people. One individual perhaps in a withdrawal management setting and then transition into an acute care setting for behavioral health services. The ATU is a treatment facility, while Withdrawal Management is more about getting someone into a sober place and motivating towards treatment. The ATU meets the standards of the 2765 statutes. It is either voluntary or involuntary in terms of services provided. If you've ever had the displeasure of, of needing or having a family member need to receive that level of care, you know that those facilities can sometimes be really scary places. The ATU is a lower level of care than a psychiatric facility. I wish we had the opportunity to take you on a tour and certainly you're welcome at any time. But when people walk in the door, the environment that they're walking into is one that is really welcoming and safe. I was recently reading some patient surveys, which we do at every discharge, and hearing a lot and seeing repeatedly people say, "This was a really safe environment for me to work on things that felt really dangerous or very scary." We have patients who move through our crisis services multiple times. And to them having a place in the community where they can land that they know or not, like are familiar with can be really supportive to them. I think about a patient who came into Withdrawal Management just recently. They were suffering from severe depression and as a result, they were also using substances and drinking quite heavily. That is what initially brought them into our crisis services and then respectively into our Withdrawal Management Program. They were seen then by a clinician who supported them and understanding that at this point their risk is really high. They were at risk for self-harming and specifically suicide, which is a really dark and scary place for someone to be. This particular individual said, "Yeah, I'm willing to go to the ATU. I'm willing to do something different. I can't keep living this way." And so they were admitted to our ATU, which has an average length of stay of three to five days, but typically somewhere around 10. And they were able to stay and feel safe, supported, see psychiatry, therapy, case management, group services. And now is successfully stabilized in all of their healthcare needs, which include primary care for this person. So this individual traveled through one door. They walked through a door that was a crisis door. They were moved into a Withdrawal Management Support Program and then later stabilized in an ATU, all within our community. There are some places where this person would have had to go to Denver, to Colorado Springs, to Grand Junction. And this time, we were able to intervene early and effectively. And so without these programs, I feel like it would be a significant disservice to our community.
Thank you, Molly. Before we move on, let's open it up for questions for council or staff. And then we'll move on to the other two programs.
Questions, go ahead.
Just real quick, what is the capacity for, for both? Are you seeing that you are at 100% most of the time? Or do you feel like there, there's still some room to grow? Not that we need to grow, but is, could we take on more? You know, where, where are you kind of seeing those levels at?
I think both areas, they vary, of course, in terms of if they are at the top of their census. Withdrawal Management is very frequently utilized at high capacity. And the acute treatment unit is licensed as a 15-bed facility. And it is for adults age 18 and over. And so we're unable to serve adolescents and youth in our ATU specifically. We're seeing that those levels very much vary in terms of it being at a seven-bed capacity or higher. We are actively staffing our ATU in particular to have service 24 hours for admissions, of course, as well as increasing our bed capacity by having the appropriate number that needs to be kind of ratioed based on staff. So there's a staff-to-patient ratio that's needed as well as nursing staff. We have room to grow, I would say, and we are utilized well.
And to add to that, we, as many of you may know, we just merged about a year ago with Center for Mental Health in our six neighboring counties. So we now serve 11 counties. And one of the reasons we did that merger was to optimize capacity between those two organizations. Both on the administrative side, there's optimization you can do. But more importantly, there's clinical optimization we could do. So for example, when we hire a child psychiatrist, which is very difficult to do in rural Colorado, we can provide that child psychiatry across 11 counties through telehealth. So in answer to your question, in our upper 11 counties, we actually have acute treatment also for adolescents. So when he, when we have an adolescent in need here, we can do that move to that program a lot easier and a lot more quickly than we could to an outside of, of area service.
I would also add that there are conditions under which a person would receive services on the front range or those other kind of locations that I described, based on their acuity being such that we couldn't effectively and safely treat them in the ATU. But one of our major motivators and a practice that's been happening for many years is discharge planning that allows that person to step down into a lower level of care more quickly and accepting them into our ATU for a smoother and safer transition back to community.
Thanks so much.
Other questions from council? Great, thank you.
Absolutely. So then just to briefly talk about our Durango Integrated Healthcare Project, and then we'll move on to core. So our, our DIH, Durango Integrated Healthcare Project, is something that's been in the making now for about 10 years. So when we became a community health center and started providing primary care and dental, we knew that the original locations of our clinics would have to eventually be consolidated into one place for a couple of reasons. One, we knew we would grow out of them, but also But also we knew that with the target of providing truly integrated care and one-stop-shop kind of care for our patients, we can't have our clinics spread all over the city. So right now we have La Plata Integrated Healthcare by the library where we do medical, dental and a bunch of support services. We have our Oral Health Clinic on Florida. We have our Behavioral Health Clinic over in Boto and then our corporate location in Boto. And our fifth location, Crossroads, is what we were just talking about. So as you can imagine, if I were someone with limited transportation capacity, for example, it would be really challenging for me to go to all those locations, even though, of course, we encourage our patients to seek services at all of our locations. So the Durango Integrated Healthcare Project is about bringing four of those five locations. So all of our locations except Crossroads into one place. And that meets a whole bunch of targets. One of the main targets is that one-stop-shop kind of capacity. So a patient who walks into Durango Integrated Healthcare, once it's complete, will walk in the door, the pharmacy will be on their right. So pharmacy right there, if they get a prescription, they walk right downstairs and pick it up. That will be for community resident, uh, community members as well, not just patients. Then um, the garden level will be all behavioral healthcare. The main level will be all integrated care, uh, medical and behavioral health integrated. And then the upper floor will be dental. So it's the patient one-stop-shop capacity is one of the big targets. Another is that um, we can achieve better outcomes by having everything there. So one doorway, as Molly was talking about, um, I liked Molly's phrase of a safe place to land. So once someone walks in that doorway, they don't have to decide, oh, I want therapy, which is actually a really hard decision for most people to make, right? They can just decide, I need to see a dentist. And then once they're in, inside those doors, they can also be building that trust to receive medical care or behavioral health or um, any other thing they're, they're needing. So that's the project coming online in May twenty twenty-four. And we really appreciate that council is considering uh, supporting that project with funding as well. So we are about to move into Core, but I wanted to open it up for questions. Yes, council?
Well, it sounds like a, um, a good integrated health program. I'm curious, what kind of women's health do you provide?
Great question. Thank you. So we are a Title X provider. So we do family planning, um, the full scope of family planning. And then we also do um, women's health targeted uh, support as well, which right now includes reaching out specifically to our female patients around screenings that they may need. Mammograms that maybe do or educating our folks around um, what services may be uh, needed or available. But primarily it's that focus on um, uh, family support services.
Would that include family planning?
Yes, it does.
And what would that include for those services?
Uh, family planning includes, um, let's see, supporting families with anything they need in preparing for having kiddos. Connecting folks with pediatric practices. We partner really close with pediatric partners. Contraception would be one of the areas of care there. A lot of the screenings that moms need and prenatal care that they need, they haven't accessed yet due to challenges in engaging in healthcare. So it's really that full scope. A lot of moms, for example, who are uninsured, haven't engaged in prenatal care. So connecting them with insurance first and then connecting them with prenatal. So it's really that full continuum.
Well, I just want to know, so are you going to provide abortion care?
We actually, as a federally funded organization, we cannot provide abortion care. Anyone who's funded by the Health Resources and Services Administration, that's HERSA, which funds us as a community health center, um, we're not permitted to provide those services, no.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions from council?
Just really quick, are there any? There's no barriers of entry, you know, if there, you know, anybody can go in and, and receive those services regardless of citizenship or anything that of that nature. Is that?
Absolutely. And just to clarify, you're talking about our full scope of services?
Correct.
Yes, actually, one of our main focus areas is exactly what you've just brought up. So in healthcare, as we all know, there's so many barriers to care typically. So in our communities, people can hesitate even to go to primary care for a standard screening because of the cost. As a community health center and a community mental health center, one of our primary areas of our mission is to eliminate those barriers. So anyone at any income level or any insurance status could come in. And that's a range from if someone's experiencing homelessness, for example, they may not have five dollars. So they could come in on what we call a fee waiver and have no fee at all. Someone on private insurance, for example, would be paying their copay. Someone who's uninsured, we would be doing two things. We would get them on our sliding fee, which is um, a slide anywhere from five dollars to a higher cost depending on income. Or um, we would support them, usually an and, we would support them in getting insured. So a lot of folks who qualify for Medicaid and Medicare don't, don't have that coverage in place. It's really complicated to, to sign up for. So we do a lot of support around that. So the answer is yes, our effort is zero barriers.
That's awesome. Um, last one thing real quick, um, do you have bilingual services available?
We do. Right now we have fourteen bilingual staff, um, which isn't the number we would like. So our hope would be to have multiple bilingual staff, Spanish, English in, in every clinic location. And that's hard. It's hard. We have challenges. As healthcare is experiencing all across the country, challenges in hiring. So we're, we're doing a lot of work around building pipelines for hiring because of that issue. But yes, bilingual is a priority. We just received um, funding and certification through SAMSA. So that's Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the federal level administration, to become a CCBHC, which is a community behavioral health clinic similar to a, a community mental health center, but on the behavioral health side. Um, and the reason I bring that up is there's a high priority for um, equity and inclusion work as part of being a CCBHC. And as you can tell, I could go on all, all day about it. Um, but great questions.
Excellent. Other questions? It's so important. Um, how many total staff do you have in all five?
We're going to move a hundred and forty staff into the Durango Integrated Healthcare. And then we'll continue with our staff at Crossroads as well. So it's a, it's a large team moving in there.
It's a large team.
And you would think that building is larger than four clinics. But interestingly, we want to, as part of the project, expand our, expand our capacity to meet our healthcare needs for years out, not just tomorrow. And so for example, with our Oral Health Clinic, we currently have for, for City of Durango, we currently have six chairs. And we'll move to, to thirteen chairs. So our hope is that that can meet needs, not just right now, but going forward. And to your, to your question, counselor, um, we uh, are the sole provider of dental care for adults covered by Medicaid. That's just one example of lowering those barriers and making sure that folks on Medicaid, for example, can access dental care. So there's a lot of that expansion kind of impetus for, for this project.
Excellent. Do you have any idea about how many people you care for annually, like through these doors?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, across our eleven counties was eighteen thousand last year. Yeah. And then in our community here was eight thousand. And we imagine, and when I say here, that's our five-county region. Um, and then um, uh, we're adding, we anticipate adding two thousand patients through the Durango Integrated Healthcare Project.
That's substantial. Um, and just to remind council, we have a tour uh, of Durango Integrated Healthcare. The building, correct, on October eighteenth at eleven o'clock. So we're looking forward to that and seeing it.
Thank you for taking the time. It's hard to imagine it without going in. Um, and all the walls are up and um, our construction team, we have about a hundred and fifty total folks working on this project. So a lot of economic development kind of support through doing this project. Uh, and they're doing an amazing job. So I can't wait to have council there.
We're looking forward to it as well. Other questions from council? Okay.
Wonderful. Well, we will finish up with talking about our core program. And um, Molly, would you like to start?
So our core program was launched, um, just for a brief review, in February of two thousand and twenty-one. Chief Brammer and our CEO Shelley Burke came together and determined that then was the time to start something new and different. I had mentioned in my introduction that I've been working in crisis for over eleven years. And in two thousand and twenty-one, things really changed for us. Um, we had traditionally responded to crises in two different ways. Risk assessments at local hospitals, jails and at our uh, community health centers and through mobile crisis services, which developed a few years um, into my tenure with Access Health. In two thousand and twenty-one, we determined that we had a need and that was the emergency response area. Police officers were placed in a position where they were the primary responders to calls that were far beyond what was legally driven, beyond criminal need into areas of social determinants of health. People who were suicidal, people who were experiencing psychosis, substance use, domestic violence, which included relational issues. And it was at that time that we thought, chief thought, um, and our CEO, that integration of behavioral health provider with law enforcement was essential. So we launched our first team and we found ourselves doing all of those things and then some. Relieving patrol from needing to be available for calls that require by nature time. Time that could be spent by patrol officers responding to other things that were more law enforcement-driven and also having a tailored response to the calls that included a behavioral health component, whether that be mental health, substance use, or simply existence as a human on this planet and having a really terrible day. Nobody dials nine-one-one thinking that it's going to be an excellent experience. And um, having a clinician and a law enforcement officer attend a crisis together allows a tailored response that previously wasn't there. You'll see our call totals on the screen. And some of the goals are not only to relieve officers, but also to treat people in community as the crisis arrives. We've been successful in having people remain in community at eighty percent. That means they didn't go anywhere. They stayed at home after their, after their contact with the team, or maybe they were transported to another community agency as a support. Arrest rates are extraordinarily low and largely related to existing warrants that we are unable to impact at the time of those calls, not as a result of the call itself. We are finding that the percentage of calls that are ending up in an emergency room are also relatively low overall. Those are for things where interventions are twofold. Perhaps an involuntary hold related to safety associated with substance use or behavioral health needs um, or a medical issue. So that number encompasses both of those things. The vast majority of our calls result in a voluntary status, meaning the people are not detained in any way and that they are receiving services. Again, if you've ever had, I say the displeasure, but you know, no one likes an emergency. If you've ever had to call nine-one-one, you know that when somebody shows up, it's typically resolved and then it's over and you're left to figure out the rest on your own, whether it's medical, whether it's law enforcement related. And this program does not do that. Um, a large component of what we do includes follow-up services. So if a person is contacted by our team on an initial dispatch call, we ask for permission and um, follow up with that person for multiple times, whether that be by phone or in person, and maintain a lot of relationship with individuals in the community who we have been able to serve through this response. Previous to this team, there was a gap. As a crisis therapist, um, years ago, I can tell you that we were at a disadvantage because we didn't have the relationship and collaboration with um, emergency response or even involvement, which left us pretty blind um, in terms of what happened before they got to the ER. What happened before they walked into the clinic? Um, and now our crisis continuum, so from our core teams to our mobile teams to withdrawal management and ATU, now have a better view of the experiences of, of an individual, which allows us to serve them better in the long run. We are tied into the community and woven in in a way that we had hoped for, but um, are very thrilled to have had the opportunity to make, come to fruition. We're tied into Department of Human Services, Manna, Street Team, um, Community Compassion Outreach, Access Health System, of course, um, and other community providers as well.
Um, Commander Nick Stacy with Durango PD. I, I just want to add that the officers on the street adore this program and they use it constantly. Our patrol officers, not a day goes by, if you listen to the radio, that you hear somebody saying, hey, is their core team available? Cause they're finding these people who need services that may not be able to travel to Access. And uh, we come across them constantly and then we can refer them direct to services that can come to them. And so to have this core team available has been a huge benefit to the patrol officers. Like she said, it frees up the, their time to go deal with other issues. Cause the call for service never stop um, when somebody's having a bad day. And so to be able to call for the core team to come out, uh, it, again, it's a tremendous benefit to the community. We started with one team. Now we have two officers and two clinicians. And uh, it just continues to, to show um, the impact that it has through these interactions that we've been doing.
That's excellent. Um, do you also, did you guys have a van, a vehicle for this program? I thought so.
We do. Yeah, we have a, uh, it's a hybrid Ford Explorer that's not marked. It doesn't look like a police car, uh, which we did very intentionally. Cause they do, they go to people's homes and they go to uh, check on people. And we don't want a police car pulling up in somebody's house just for a clinician doing a checkup. So yeah, we, we have a vehicle that they use and they can do transports and uh, it has all the emergency equipment. So if they do need to respond, um, that has lights and sirens and all that sort of stuff also.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Yeah. I thank you for the presentation. More important, I really appreciate what you and your team do and all the service levels that you provide. I think it not only helps the individual, but also our community, individual, short term, hopefully long term. And if you're very successful, it will save us impacts to our community and costs to deal with consequences. So I think that's all uh, great to make it very easy. I was wondering on the cost, you have four line items. And what were the prior year asks for the development?
Uh, the prior years are the same, other than Durango Integrated Healthcare. So we have with the acute treatment unit, the city and Acsis have partnered since two thousand and six. And we have a three-year memorandum of understanding that renews every three years, um, pending council's approval. So we're in, we're within that three-year period for the ATU. Um, and we come before council each year to, um, to answer questions and also to support that process and give council a chance to, um, to relook at that. Uh, so that's the same. Detox, uh, that as the intergovernment agreement, that is recalculated every three years based on usage. So the city right now is at sixty-three percent of that cost. Now we've actually paused um, drawing funds on that program because we haven't needed it right now. So we've just kind of paused. But that is generally the case is it's recalculated every three years. And then um, for Core, um, it is stable uh, to last year as well. I did just want to plant the seed that um, as Commander Stacy mentioned, the need for the Core Program, we anticipate potentially increasing. It's really a model of response and care that, um, as you, you probably have all seen across the state, we're being looked at and, and the Durango Police Department is being looked at as setting the example of what that can be. So we do want to plant the seed with council that we may come for an increase at some point to support Core. But the simple answer to your question would have been that, that they're the same as last year. And then the Durango Integrated Healthcare is a completely new project. That's a one-time ask uh, for support of establishing that program.
Okay. And then a follow-up question. Um, you, you mentioned you serve eleven counties, yeah, for some of these services. And I was just wondering, um, it works both ways, my question. So how do we assure that we pay our fair share? Maybe it needs to be more or less based on the geographical area that you Maybe it needs to be more or less based on the geographical area that you cover? And also in growth, are you anticipating increases? I assume you do, but inflation, cost of salaries, everything like that.
Yeah, that's a great question. I could nerd out on that question for a long time, so I'll try to keep it brief. We ensure that the funding from City of Durango goes to support City of Durango residents. The funding for the ATU, for example, $150,000. That is a wonderful contribution and a small portion of the cost of the number of City of Durango residents that we serve at the ATU. The ATU as a 24/7/365 program is just really expensive to operate. It's worth it. And that's why we do a lot of state and federal funding for the ATU, as well as that local support. And then detox is the same thing. It's based on usage. So we really ensure that those supporting detox are getting their investment out of the funds they're paying. The Durango Integrated Healthcare, we imagine probably will have a similar usage by City of Durango residents as we're seeing in our respective clinics now. So again, all of our locations in City of Durango do have a primary role in serving City of Durango residents. So we can definitely reassure the city that that's where those funds are going. To answer your other question around what we're seeing in cost overall, cost is going up and reimbursement is not at the same rate. Healthcare is really tough and the healthcare environment is getting tougher and tougher every year. So we're trying to be very dynamic and creative in how we respond. To give you an example of that, this funding through SAMSA that I mentioned as a CCBHC, that is going to leverage $4 million of federal dollars into our local community over four years. And those dollars are to support building a behavioral health, mental health, and substance use team to serve underserved and highly vulnerable community members. So we try to get creative like that every chance we get because, to your point, costs are going up.
Thank you and keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to make one comment, additional comment on Core, which is that the Durango Police Department is amazing. You probably know that already. But during 2020, as we all remember, 2020 was not a fun year. And in the middle of 2020, Chief Brammer and the team were willing to work with Access and actually came to Access with the idea and said, let's do this right now in the middle of a pandemic, because this is the time we need this and our community members need this. And Access sort of went, wow, you're right. This is a tough time to do this, but you're right, we need to do this. So it was really Chief Brammer and the team that made Core happen. And we have been such a happy partner in doing it. And now, again, statewide, we're being looked at. And the police department is being looked at as the way you can pull something like this off. So anyway, kudos to our department. It's really exceptional.
For a potential, in the future, when you're looking at potential maybe needs for, for, for additional funding, what, what would that additional funding potentially go to? More officers and staff or for the core?
You know, it sort of depends. To, to Commander Stacy's comment, having another team probably would be ideal. I'm going to shush though. I'm glancing at Chief Brammer to see if he's nodding. But I also want to see what Molly and Commander Stacy would say to that.
I only ask, it just seems like such a great program and it's helping in the right ways. So just curious.
So I think that there's a couple of different ways that we could go in our growth. Right now, our services are not 24 hours a day. They are a period of time that was identified as being the highest need based on a study of activity in previous years, as well as an identification that in later hours of the day, we have how, we have higher incidence of criminal activity and safety issues that were not as necessary for our initial piloting and launching of the program. Ideally, we'd have services that were expanded into four teams instead of just two. A net, a very nice next step, however, I spoke a little bit about the follow-up that we do, which is a very integrated part of our, of the services, but not necessarily something that we need to have being completed by someone who is a licensed clinician, which are the people doing those follow-ups. And so thinking about having the right people in the right place at the right time, looking at people who can provide behavioral health services at a case management level, not unlike a PST for law enforcement, someone who can assist in that referral navigation and linkage, leaving our team available for the higher acuity calls would be a beautiful next step.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Sarada, Molly, and Commander Stacy for that presentation. Next to present the 2024 budget request on behalf of La Plata County Humane Society, are Tricia Simpson, the Executive Director, and Chris Nelson, Director of Animal Services, who will be joining us via Zoom. Oh, he's here. Wonderful.
Thanks so much. And if you could announce yourself into the mic, it would be great for us.
My name is Tricia Simpson. I'm the Executive Director of the La Plata County Humane Society.
Chris Nelson, Director of Animal Services.
So thank you so much for having us today. We submitted a pretty lengthy narrative, but the bottom line is we are asking for a very significant increase to support the operations of the shelter and our animal protection officers. So the four services we provide, Durango and La Plata County, we have animal protection officers who serve alongside the police and sheriff's department with their calls to dispatch, if it's related to domestic animals, either regulation, cruelty, nuisance. Our animal protection officers respond to those calls. They're a highly professional group working alongside law enforcement here in Durango. We also provide in our shelter services, and that's Chris's domain. We provide shelter services to animals who are surrendered to us, who are, who come to us as strays. We have a significant overpopulation issue in this community. It, it, I can't overstate, we're not alone in that. This is a national problem and a national opportunity. So in addition to shelter services, we receive all animals who are brought to us from La Plata County. That's our requirement. We provide shelter services. We provide low-cost veterinary care, and we also provide mitigation. So we're working, we will never work ourselves out of business sadly, but we work very hard to provide as many low-cost services for spay and neuter and animal health as we can. So because I submitted a pretty long narrative that I'm pretty sure is in your notebook, what I'd like to do is just take you inside our organization and just give you a look at what we do, who does this work, who we work with, and how we integrate in our community. So Tom? So you should be very proud of the Humane Society and the people who work there. You should also know that if we did not have the cadre of volunteers and fosters, we would never, ever be able to do what we do. We, we probably have a third of the animal population that is homeless, houseless in Durango. We rely heavily on fosters during the months, the months we're just ending to take care of animals, primarily litters, nursing, nursing animals in people's homes. But when we do that, we train them, recruit them, train them, provide them food and medical care. But they take that pressure off. We also have a large number of volunteers who come and walk dogs, sit with dogs, take the animals home if they're under stress in the shelter. So without, we have a great staff, but without the larger community support, we would not be able to do what we do. We're asking for a large increase this year. And I, the reason why is the cost, just like everyone else, we have no discretionary expenses. We can't not feed the animals. We can't say no when people bring them to us for care. For whatever the reason, it's not for us to question why. If you're a La Plata County resident and you want to surrender your animal, it's ours. So that's, them's the rules. So we feed them, we give them veterinary care. No animal leaves our facility without being spayed and neutered. Mo, we have more animals than we've had historically, and they stay longer. A lot of what's driving this is economic issues. People's home situations change. Their economic situations change. They have not had their pets spayed or neutered. We're there as that safety net to help the community. So unfortunately, we, we have drifted out of parity right now. The city and the county provide about 30% of our budget, just short of that. And what we're asking for is a correction to bring that up to about 50%. The rest of the revenue comes from our thrift store, which also takes help. I was looking at Durango's strategic initiatives, and we are, we are well in line with what the City of Durango is, is focused on. We are completely in alignment and very supportive of that. So the thrift store provides some revenue. We do have development and fundraising activity. We have generous donors. But that's not a stable source of funding for what we do. So over the last few years, as everyone has experienced the same inflation for everything, we have also experienced that, and we've made up for that with our reserves. But we want to just get back into a more stable funding situation. I do want to say and give credit to our previous board members. We completed a full shelter renovation last year that was sorely needed and long overdue. But we were able to pay for that out of cash on hand, which is, it was a $1.2 million project, all with local vendors. Project lead was Jeddah Construction. We needed that. That set us up for 10 years of reliability and safe operations. We changed some things inside the shelter that made it better and more hospitable for the animals and our care. But going forward, we need to, we've done two things. We'd like to change our revenue if we can, and with your support, we're asking the county to do the same, to have about 50% of our budget be covered by the city and the county. We will do the rest through fundraising, thrift store operations. We've also just set up a, a fund with the community, an organization fund with the community foundation. And the specific purpose of that is to allow donors who are more interested in helping us in longer-term initiatives. So for the next renovation, we want to have that cash on hand again when we have capital improvements that need to be made. We have, we are very hard on our building. We have a very sturdy building, but it's just like a hospital or any other building where there are a lot of living things in there that need to be clean and safe and healthy. It's, we're very hard on the, all of the infrastructure. So we have to be mindful of having that cash on hand to be ready to keep things running. We can't, we can't take the animal somewhere else if the HVAC goes out or if the plumbing's not working. It's all got to work all the time. So I, I am appreciative of you paying attention, and I'm appreciative of you considering this significant increase. I can assure you that the money will be well spent. And we are, we are mindful of every cent that we receive, no matter where it's from. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is the increase, Devon?
Yeah, sure. So for the, for the two contracts together, it's about $300,000. And that was included in the packet. So it's, let me see here.
So the increases?
It's $100,000. Yes. Yep. So it's $100,000 for the animal control contract. And then it's $200,000 for the shelter.
Can you repeat that one more time? So they asked for 709? And what is in the package? That was the number that changed it, that we're going to?
Right. So, absolutely. And so since council has not had the budget retreat, and we're, you know, having these conversations now, we left it at the same amount that it was last year. So for the animal shelter, again, that is about a $200,000 increase in that request. And then in the protection, I'm sorry, the animal shelter, yes, is $200,000 increase. And then for the animal protection contract is $100,000 increase. So total $300,000.
You say increase. So what was the last year's amount?
So it's the same. That's in the 2024 proposed city manager's budget. So it was $144,000 for the animal shelter. And it is $265,883 for the animal control contract.
So, so, yeah, so the actual ask as well as what is proposed is the same.
Wait, what did you ask?
Also, we're not, we're not, staff is not recommending the increase. Is that?
Good point. Good point, Councilor Drift.
Is that correct? So the ask is 709, staff recommends 409?
I don't think you're making any recommendations, right? You're just giving us the information, correct?
Correct. So what was included in the 2024 proposed budget was, what is a flat budget request for all of the contracts? It's obviously up to council's discretion should council choose or give direction in the retreat that we can increase that.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I have a question. So you're asking for approximately 700,000. And last year, we funded 409,000. And you're asking for a 20% increase. So is that 700,000, 10% of our half of the increase because you're going to also ask the county for 10% increase?
It's proportional for both. So we're asking you both for proportion, basically 72%. It's a, it's a big number, but that gets the combined support from the city and the county who we provide these services to, to 50% of our budget.
All right. Okay. So just to confirm that county would be paying an equal portion of increase?
If they approve it.
If they approve it.
So I'm going to dive it out a little bit in detail. So you're asking an extra $100,000 for APO, right? And then another $100,000 potentially from the county for APO. So 200 total. Do you anticipate paying the APO more or bringing on more APO, more officers or both?
Absorb the increases in this past year. We have already absorbed the inflation. We've absorbed, we've had to raise hourly rates across the board, as we all have everywhere. We had people, we need people to come do the work, and we were not getting people walking in the door. So where our hourly work rates are really on parity with everybody else in the county. We have excellent people. They just need to have a wage they could survive on. Same, so we've already absorbed these costs, quite frankly, and we're just hoping to get sort of back into balance.
So this is backfill, pretty much, to try to reallocate those funds?
When we, and Chris has been here in previous years, at this, I think the inflation has, it didn't creep up. It hit everybody. We just didn't ask for enough. So we're looking for a big correction now, and hopefully we can moderate that going forward. We intend to moderate that. We intend to moderate that going forward.
Sure. And then, but what about the four hundred thousand for the, the additional ask for the city and the county for shelter operations? What do you anticipate kind of happening on that front?
We're hoping to have it happen since we're already absorbing those costs too.
Okay. And then, so you're trying to understand, so right now thirty percent is being paid for by the city and county, correct? And then you're looking for fifty. So with donors potentially, which is kind of an unstable platform for, for money generation. And then your money coming from the, the thrift store, do you anticipate those kind of remaining fairly consistent?
They've been, yes, the thrift store does a remarkable job, and I'm sorry if I'm going over time, but they do a really good job. We have great support from the community for donations, and they do a terrific job merchandising, and their revenue has been about a million a year. So.
Okay. So all of the, the extra ask, I think, is it just, you're just trying to backfill and try to get back up to fight weight?
Trying to get to a more even split of.
Okay. So you're not looking to?
subsidizing.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to start off thanking you not also for the presentation, but I think it is an extremely important service that you provide to organisms that can't speak up. So I I had a couple of questions. I, I thought I heard before that the, the numbers on this Excel sheet look similar as an intake. But I believe that you had mentioned to me before that the, it is actually adoption rates that are very low, and therefore you're reaching capacity pretty quickly.
The adoption rates currently are about the same as what they've been traditionally. It's, it's hard to get more people to adopt every year. You can fluctuate, we've, you know, pricing and different things, but it really doesn't move the needle. People get dogs and cats when they're ready to get cats. Something that's sort of a theory, but nationwide, one of the reasons that we're sort of in the pickle where we are now is during COVID, everyone ran out and adopted. And also you had a lot of services nationwide that were shut down. Spay neuter was closed for, for the public for a very long time. With all those people adopting also, so breeders also increased the number of animals that they had, and now we're, we've got this glut. An example, our average length of stay in 2020, 2019, and before was about thirteen days, and that is, that went up in 2021. And again, last year it's now over thirty days. So instead of keeping dogs and cats around for thirteen days, we've got them for at least a month. That, the amount of expenses that increases is incredible. Not to mention, as Trish said, the inflation for just every expense has gone through the roof. As, you know, Access was talking about the healthcare issues. Well, animals use the same products and, and stuff for the, that humans do. So those, all the prices for medications and things like that have gone through the roof.
I, and one of the questions, that was the spay and neutering events. Is that started back up again, or is it still?
Yeah, we, we, we provide, we do one clinic each week minimum for the public, plus we're doing all of the, you know, a couple thousand animals a year that, that we see come through our doors. Sometimes two clinics a week, plus we're doing low cost rabies and vaccine clinics as well.
And then maybe the last question. If this wouldn't pass, what is the, what is the scenario that you're facing, or we as a community and all the animals that?
I guess we keep doing what we're doing, and we have less opportunity to plan for the future, and we're going more year to year. But when we're, we waited so long on the renovation of the building, it probably costs more than it would have. And I know you have background in engineering. If you fix things before they break, it costs less. If you have to do the whole thing in one whack, it's far more expensive. So we're trying to get smarter, do more planning and be, to be honest, I would love for the, for the Humane Society to reach a point where we could be more self-sufficient, but it's going to take a while to build that endowment. That's a long-term plan. But it's certainly something we can work towards and have, having money that's invested for future, future needs is one of the goals that we have and something that donors, they like that. Some like operations, some like future, looking at future plans. So we're trying to appeal to everybody.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks so very much for the presentation. And again, we have our retreat next week. We appreciate your information.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trish and Chris. Appreciate it. Next to present the 2024 budget request on behalf of the La Plata Youth Service is Dr. Jason St. Mary, the Executive Director for La Plata Youth Services and Program Director for the Therapeutic Program, and Chris Braun, the Division Program Manager from La Plata Youth Service.
Thank you for joining us.
Obviously, I'm really prepared for these type of things. Good to see you all. Some I know, some I don't, but thank you for having us as always. La Plata Youth Services have been serving this community and the youth and families of this area since nineteen ninety-four. What we've experienced in the last two to three years is an influx of struggle. You know, we're looking at increases in youth suicidality and suicide ideation. We're looking at the lack or gap in mental, uh, mental health, youth services. And similarly, as we saw this last year at the closing of the Purple Cliffs, a, a great influx of homeless youth in this community. In our program, he's at the forefront of addressing all of these issues. This past year, our collaborative management program, or CMP, was able to permanently house eighteen families during the crisis after going through a successful motel voucher program. Similarly, we served nearly two hundred and thirty students with school-based mental health and behavioral health support. Students who otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to receive these services outside of the school environment. La Plata Youth Service is really interested and focused on alleviating barriers to access. Oftentimes, the students that we serve are those with marginalized aspects of identity, youth of color, those in LGBTQ population, those who lower socioeconomic status families, as well as those with historical or generation elements of trauma. And what we've seen is the exasperation of this in the last couple of years. When we were here last year, it was recommended that we ask for more money, and so we're here asking for more money. In part, to support our diversion program. We saw a twenty percent increase in diversion referrals this year, in part, and as I explained when I was here last year, our Restorative Practices Program closed. And we anticipated that we would see this greater influx in need without having this more preventative framework in place, and we did. Consequently, or I guess in conjunction with, one of the larger funders of our diversion program is the Division of Criminal Justice. They recently underwent a three-year reallocation, and because we are in an under-resourced rural environment, we're going to receive less money. And that is the nature of the game, unfortunately, sometimes. And so we're here asking for an increase specifically to support our diversion program. Really supporting youth and from staying out of the school-to-prison pipeline, working very strategically with Durango Police Department, as well as the and Marshals of Bayfield, as well as the Town of Ignatia. Youth are struggling. Families are in a, in a place that I, in the twenty-plus years I've been in this community, I have not seen. And the intensity of behaviors, the intensity of trauma has magnified exponentially in the last three to four years. And so we're here to keep doing what we do and really, you know, address not just behaviors as they occur, but preventatively, getting upstream of these initiatives, so we can provide the skills, the resilience, resilient opportunities, and the capacity building or executive, executive functioning for young people in order to really be able to thrive in an environment where chaos ensues. And so we're here before the council. We are seeking one hundred and three thousand dollars, which historically we have, I believe was ninety-one-five. And this is really to support the influx of diversion referrals and to be able to case manage those across the county, but more specifically in the city of Durango.
Now I can speak more on, oh, go ahead, Dave. You can.
Go ahead, Chris, please.
Yeah, I can speak just more on diversion side of things. Like Jason was saying, we have had an increase in referrals and with the new school year, we've, we've gotten back up to a pretty drastic increase within the last, I guess, four weeks now. So the school has gone up, and so, and it's not looking to slow down, and our capacity is anticipated to be kind of, you know, at, at a ceiling at some point. And so we're, we're hoping to, you know, gain more resource and more support in, you know, kind of attending this increase, whether that means having a pending list. And we've been doing a lot of backend work to revamp the diversion program, to, you know, get more accountability, to get more structure for these youth that are otherwise not having this structure. Oftentimes, this can be seen as a wake-up call, or it's more of an indication of repeat behavior, and there's a lot of multi-system work going on behind the scenes for a lot of this youth, and this is a, the more approachable, human-centered way to intervene before it gets to a more drastic point. Using more resources, going to district court, going to juvenile services out in Grand Junction, because there's not an access out here. Even connecting youth to crisis services that are out of state or out of county, sometimes out of state for certain youth. And so we are oftentimes the first point of contact before it really gets to that drastic measure. And yeah, that's just more of my piece on the diversion side of things. But I'll let you go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, I was going to ask what, where are your other funding mechanisms? Is it just this grant, or not grant, but this funding that you're getting from the city, or what, where else are you sourcing your, your operational costs?
Organizationally or through?
I mean, just in totality, you know?
We have, we have state, federal, local foundational grants. We diversify intentionally. We do not want to put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak. We know funding streams go away. Especially, you know, with, with some economic, some of the economic situations we're currently in. And so we have a pretty diversified and strategic breakdown of funding across all of our programming.
What are your yearly operational costs?
Our budget is about one point five million dollars per year.
I just wanted to thank you. Appreciate it. Again, last year, I remember well the same presentation, not the same presentation, but same presentation. I, maybe just a small question. Is, is it in this case the same? Is it the, what they asked part of the budget, or is it what we had last year, the budget?
Last year, we asked for ninety one thousand five hundred dollars, and this year we're asking for one hundred and three thousand.
No, but we're in the middle of the budget process, and they already have the numbers in. I just haven't checked on the number yet.
Sure. So in this case, with it being an eleven thousand dollar request increase, we did include that in the budget since it was nominal.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I'd like to say thank you for your work.
Appreciate it. And thank you all.
Yeah, thanks for all you do.
Good job. No one has questions.
Thank you very much. We sure recognize the importance of it. So thank you so much.
Good to see you all. Appreciate the time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Chris. Last to present the 2024 budget request on behalf of United Way is Ali Savestano, the Vice President of Operations, and Lynn Urban, President and CEO.
Thank you for joining us.
Hi. Nice to see everyone. I like the new setup that we have going on here.
Yeah.
Um, so thanks for letting us be here again with you this year, and thank you for trusting United Way to manage this funding process. These funds provide vital support to our local nonprofits. They provide operational, programmatic, leveraged fund dollars and matching grant dollars for our local nonprofits. So, um, are you in charge of the slides? Can I? Okay, cool. That'll be easier, probably. So I'd like to give you a quick overview of our process for those of you who may not be familiar with it. We create an application on behalf of the city and have it available electronically to complete and submit. Application includes submission of financials and organizational documentation and requirement to demonstrate how the requested project or organization fits within and helps for their council's strategic plan. We advertise when the application is ready on social media, on our website, on the city's website, in the Herald, and in an email blast to our contacts and all of our past applicants. We collect and organize application submissions. We recruit an all-volunteer committee with diverse backgrounds who reside or work in the city of Durango, who are not directly affiliated with the United Way of Southwest Colorado or the city. Any conflicts of interest between the committee members and applicants are identified and shared with the group, and those conflicts are not permitted to make funding recommendations, or those with conflicts are not permitted to make funding recommendations for those conflicting organizations. We send our completed applications to the committee for thorough review. We coordinate with each applicant to schedule an interview with the committee. We send clarification and additional information requests from the committee to the applicants to answer before interview day. Committee meets for one full day to interview each applicant for a brief amount of time, usually five to eight minutes, depending on how many applications we receive. The committee uses this time to ask any additional questions they may have for each applicant, and any remaining time is used by the applicant how they see fit. Fit. Committee then deliberates and makes funding recommendations based on how they think the city's funds will make the most positive impact for the city's residents. United Way then presents the committee's recommendations to council for budget adoption. United Way notify, or notifies all applicants of final funding decisions and distributes grant dollars on a monthly basis. Then we create also quarterly grant reports, which are shared with staff, as well as final year-end grant report with, from each recipient, which is then shared with city staff and council. So if you would look a couple pages ahead in your agenda and refer to the historical funding spreadsheet, you can see that the total CFS dollars budgeted for the past seven years and the total asks from human services applicants and what was funded. Two thousand nineteen was an anomaly year. There were additional restrictions that excluded any organization from receiving any amount of money from the city already, including one dollar leases from applying. This made several organizations ineligible to apply, which is why the asks were so much lower that year. You can see there's only been one increase in funding, two thousand nineteen accepted in the last seven years, which was last year. The need continues to grow as our local nonprofits continue providing vital, basic need services to an ever-growing population. There have always been a significant gap between what the organizations need or ask for and what is available with CFS funding. The five-year average gap range is about a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred dollars. We worked on closing that gap a little bit last year, but we would like to take a significant step forward in closing it this year. From data we gathered from surveying last year's applicants and personal knowledge of new applicants that intend on applying this year, we're anticipating asks again to be over four hundred thousand dollars this year. So what we are proposing is to respectfully ask for an increase in the CFS budget this year of a hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars to help close this gap. This will increase the CFS budget to three hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. This would allow three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go directly to our basic needs nonprofit organizations. The remaining would go to our United Way administration fee, of which we're proposing decreasing slightly again this year from five point six six to five point oh five. Historically, it's been six percent. So that more dollars can go directly to the applicants. Again, this grant, the need is great as our population continues to grow, as you know, and also organizations face inflation and cost of living increase over the past seven years. The inflation rate has increased approximately forty-four percent. So in effect, since the budget has remained flat, our nonprofits are actually receiving less support than they were seven years ago in the budget to, to counter, without counting for, countering for inflation. So more CFS dollars equals more money in Durango. If you want to look at the twenty twenty-three leverage fund spreadsheet that has also been provided, reference that while I talk a little bit about it. So why are these CFS funds so important? Well, you may be asking yourself how relatively few dollars to some of these organizations' budgets can make such a difference? And the answer is that the majority of these organizations use CFS dollars as matching dollars to obtain other grants, or to use them as leveraged funds for other grants. Many granters want to be sure that the program or organization they are awarding is solid and viable, and one thing that they use to determine this is the support from their local governments. Many granters will not consider grant applications unless they can demonstrate their local government believes in and supports them financially as well. In addition, some granters agree to increase their grant amounts based on the dollars of local support they are receiving. So this means the more local support these organizations receive, the more outside support they will also receive, both federal, state, and private. Of the twenty-eight, two thousand three CFS Of the 28, 2003 CFS applicants, or sorry, award recipients, 19 responded to our survey in time for this presentation. Of those 19, 15 used CFS dollars for direct match and or leveraged funds in 2023. And you can see who those are and the dollars amount, a dollar amounts on that spreadsheet. These leveraged CFS dollars brought in over $2.1 million in additional grant funds to our community in 2023. And this doesn't even include the 10 who were not able to respond in time. So as you can see, this is huge. It's a really big deal for our community. And CFS dollars go a long way to improving lives in Durango and are imperative for our nonprofits to continue providing basic need services to our community members. A roughly $100,000 increase in CFS funding likely means close to yet another $1 million in grants coming into our community and going directly to our basic need nonprofits and supportive services for our community members. So we hope that you can see the great value in a CFS budget increase this year. And ask that you sincerely consider this request, which will make a huge tangible, positive impact on the lives in the city of Durango. Thanks for your time and your trust in our organization and our process. And on behalf of all the CFS applicants and recipients, we want to express our sincere gratitude for these funds and the council's continued commitment and support of them. And sorry, we're just like reading that whole time, but I want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Absolutely fine. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I have one. I had wished that we would have included in our agenda where the funding went last year, because it's information. It's good information.
Sure.
Especially for the new counselors to see how it was dispersed among many different organizations. Can you, since we don't have it in our packet, can you talk about how many organizations we funded with the funding and about the approximate amount that it was?
Yep. So last year, we funded $250,000 total. And there were, what did I say? Nine or?
I think you did say nine, what?
What? 28 applicants. I'm sorry.
28 applicants.
Recipients. I think there were 32 applicants, but 28 recipients last year.
Out of the, okay.
250 was spread over 28 organizations.
And the spreadsheet that's in the package gives you 20 or so out of those, I guess.
Yeah. So those are the 19. And that I didn't include what they actually received. That's just the additional funds that were leveraged thanks to the city support funds.
Excellent. Questions from council?
I, I just think it's great that not only we provide these services through you and the way you manage it and bring it back to us, I think in February. Is that about right? That we see the list of the
Yeah. So we will, assuming that you all approve us to do this again this year, we will make the application go live as soon as possible. And that will be open through mid December or mid November, right before Thanksgiving, the holidays start. And then our committee usually meets in the beginning of December, usually the first week or two of December. And then I'll send the funding recommendations from committee to staff for your annual budget meeting in either January or February. I'm not sure which one, but.
No, no, I, I think it's great what you do. And I'm glad. Did you present last year? I don't.
I did.
You did? Okay. Somehow it
That's okay.
Went over the head. But I do remember that I love seeing that our dollars go way further than just a dollar amount.
Absolutely.
And all these organizations that you take on that all selection process and review, I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions from council? Go ahead.
Elise, I'm sorry if you've already gone over this. Do you anticipate giving out more grants or just increasing the amount of dollars per grant or?
So I anticipate about, again, based just based on my personal knowledge, about three more applicants that have never applied before. And whether the committee believes that's a good use of city funds or not, to be determined. But it was sort of the same last year. There were three organizations that were not funded last year. And so I think it'll be kind of the same as what we were looking at last year around low 30s. And it's going to be over $400,000. So I think if we are able to increase to 350,000, it will make a significant, it will be a significant help in making sure these organizations are getting what they need.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have one small clarifying question, same as before. Is the city budget also showing the same amount? Or is this another? The draft budget, I should say.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. So what the 2024 budget is showing, 300,000. So for this request, we looked at kind of meeting in the middle with a 20% increase over the 2023. And so of course, you know, at the retreat, the council, direct staff to increase all of the community support funding buckets, we're, we're happy to do so with that piece of it. So.
Can you, would you mind when we have the budget retreat to remind council that when we get to that point, that the ask was different from what the staff is recommending in their budget?
Yes.
Flag goes up that we.
Absolutely. We will show what was requested by the agencies and then what is currently in the 2024 budget.
Thank you.
And so, Elise, we are letting nonprofit organizations who have the $1 lease with us apply now, correct?
Yes.
And that was in 2019?
Yep, that was a one-time deal and didn't quite work out. So yeah, that's not a requirement any longer.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, it excluded a lot of organizations, as you can imagine.
Absolutely. Other questions from council? No, thanks so much. We appreciate it.
Have a great rest of your day.
Yeah, you too. Thanks.
Thank you, Elise. If there aren't any further questions from council in regards to the 2024 community support of funded block grants, then if there are any additional questions from council, mayor, councilors?
No, thank you.
I have one little question. I, there was a Bear Working Group request. I was just wondering, is that something that would fall if it's even considered? Would it go directly to the city manager? Because I think the ask was very low.
Yes, the $5,000 requested from Bear Smart was included. In addition, at our budget retreat, we'll also discuss recommendations to increase the food tax rebate program that has been coming in higher historically. There's also been some changes around the requirements on that as well. The utility rebate that was left flat. So we'll absolutely share those other components too.
And just so I understood correctly, the Bearwick Working Group gets $5,000 or in the draft budget, there is a line item for $5,000.
Correct.
Okay. And that would always go through the city direct, not as part of these block grants, these kind of items. Or how do we split up? How do I know which ones fall under this program, which will fall under the United Way and which ones fall directly?
Sure. We, we did ask United Way if that was an eligible program, and it did not meet their criteria. Bear Smart did not. And so we did include it in the proposal. And so we'll do a good job reflecting that in the budget retreat about what exactly everything is in there as well.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for the record, I'm seeing if I'm adding it correctly for the total on this agenda packet of the community support contracted funding proposed proposal that we're considering today, we're talking about today, I have 1.789 million. Okay. Excellent. I think that is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. I guess with that, we'll move to, I think we're, I think we're up with bid now, Tim. You were first on our, in our packet, but last to present, so saving the best for last.
Lucky me. All right. Thank you. I'm Tim Walsworth. I'm the Executive Director of the Durango Business Improvement District or the BID. It's nice to see y'all. Thank you for giving us time. I'm not here to ask you for money. It's a little different than everybody else. By state statutes, bids are required to present their budget and their work plan to their local municipality every year in September. And so I want to present to you what our budget is that our board has reviewed and approved and go over a few of the details on what that would allow us to accomplish in 2024. Tom, I think I have a presentation back there perhaps. If not, we can just look at what's in your packet. Okay. Correct. Separate PDF. Oh, sorry. I'll just start. And if, if we're not able to find this, that'll be okay. Most of this is in y'all's packet. A little 101 on bid. We're funded by a 2.0 mill levy on 400 commercial properties in the Central Business District and in the North Main District. Those revenues average about 271,000 annually over the past 11 years. The purpose is marketing in support of the district, funding events, event coordination and capital improvements. And that's language taken directly from the last time the bid mill levy funding was approved by its voters in 2010. We have a five-member board that's appointed by you guys, city council. We have two office staff, myself and a director of marketing and communications, Tanya Clegg. We hire eight ambassadors, eight to 10 in the summer months. They're seasonal, part-time people walking around downtown, helping people find what they need. And then we have a couple of contract employees as well. I'll do a recap of 2023. You know, we're not obviously done yet, but three quarters of the way done as of what, a couple of days ago? So I'll, I'll list this recap kind of in six, seven buckets that we try to put all of our programs and services in. And I'll start with marketing. So we manage these rewards programs. You guys might have heard of them. We do one in the spring and one at holiday. The spring one generated $171,000 in local spending blew away our goals for it. So that was great. And we'll do another one here, starting in December. We have a North Main District promotion coming up in October and November that we're in the process of planning right now. Our website, we use that to market our businesses through July. We've seen a nice, solid, double-digit percent increase in users. 15% there, 12% increase in page views and good growth on our social media, which we use pretty, pretty frequently as well. 16% growth on Instagram and 5% growth on Facebook followers. Oh, wrong button. Sorry. Communications, that's another important role that the bid plays. So we send out a weekly communication piece and the stats for that piece. 1600 subscribers, 54% open rate, 5% click rate. So a lot of people are finding that a valuable piece of information every Wednesday morning. Another area of focus for bid is events, and we manage four of them on our own and try to support and promote every other event in our town. Those are good activities to get people to come to downtown in North Main. We managed the San Juan Brew Fest on behalf of United Way, and we just did that at the end of August, over 1,700 attended. About 47,000 raised for United Way, so super proud of that event. We will do the Downtown Balloon Glow here in about three weeks, Friday, October 20, Saturday, October 21st. About 1,000 people each night, 500 block of Maine. We will do the Downtown Children's Halloween and Carnival. That's always on the day of Halloween. So the 31st, that's a Tuesday this year. At least 2,000 people attend, maybe more. If any of y'all have handed out candy, you know how much candy goes out the door that day. So that's a fun give back to the community free trick or treating safe for kids. And then we do the Singing with Santa event where we kick off the holidays in downtown, 1,500 attend. That's the day after Thanksgiving, Friday, November 24th at Buckley Park. Visitor information is another category of services. And so some highlights from this year, I noted that ambassador program earlier as part of the staff we hire that operates from Memorial Day through the end of October. So it's, it's winding down at this point. But through the end of August, I don't have the stats on September yet, but we, those ambassadors have produced 8,500 interactions with people visiting downtown, locals and tourists. And they've made 13,000 referrals to businesses or activities or events that are in town. And the city does provide a, provide a tiny bit of financial support for that. So I want to thank the city for that. The Welcome Center, we've been partners in that since that facility opened in October 2012, and we, we've continued our partnership this year. Visit Durango is the main tenant there. Fort Lewis College has a presence and the bid does as well. And then we also, for visitor information, produce a map and a business directory every year. You guys have probably seen those signs in downtown. There's one at the Train Depot, one at Buckley Park. Big map and business directory. That's the bid promoting its businesses and providing information to our visitors. So we've updated those this year. There's a North Main District only version at about 10 sheltered trolley stops along the North Main Route for the trolley. So we updated those. And then we have a printed brochure version of that and had 14,000 of those printed and distributed this year. Last couple of things, beautification is another area of our work. We partner with the city every year on the summer flower barrels. Our job actually is fairly simple in that, but we find businesses to host them and take care of them. And they, they actually all looked really good all year long this year. That was great. So we appreciate that partnership beautifying downtown. And we also partner with the Chamber of Commerce on the annual clean day. That's always the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, about 100 volunteers come out in a great partnership with the chamber to shine up downtown before that busy weekend. And last part of the 2023 recap, I just want to talk about our advocacy efforts. This isn't something that shows up in the budget, but it's part, it's part of my time. We monitor all the meetings that you guys have. I always read through your agendas and many of the other boards, planning, design review board, financial advisory board, all those boards. We want to know what's going on. There's stuff that they're doing that impacts the bid. And so we have a couple of specific efforts that we focused on this year, the Camino del Rio Underpass. We've continued to advocate for that. That's important to us. And so we're monitoring that as that's transitioned over to that financial advisory board. We were involved in the Midtown Safety and Connectivity Project. So that's Devon, one of Devon King's thing to take that area just north of downtown, really a midtown kind of area and and make that safer for pedestrians and cyclists and vehicles. And then the Downtown's Next Step Project, I would just want to clarify on that, that we, what the bid supports on that is continuing to explore the concept. How can downtown be safer for pedestrians and more enjoyable? And how can we have permanent outdoor space for businesses? And we, we actually really look forward in the coming year to seeing designs. I think they've pegged the 600 and 700 blocks of Maine and do a detailed design there that allow us to really look at costs. What are we trading for this new space? And we can really do a good evaluation of the pros and cons of that. And the last thing I'll mention on 2023, I said I was the last thing, but I found one more, and that's an election. So, you know, we're funded by a property tax and y'all know voters vote on those property taxes. And so the bid's current funding is set to expire 2025. So we're a little ahead of it. But we're going to the, the folks that can vote in the bid election this November, November 7th. And we're going to ask them if they would continue bids funding at the same rate and put it in place for 15 years through 2041. So who gets to vote? There's a couple of qualifiers. You got to be a person. So, you know, a lot of properties are owned by LLCs and trusts. There's a process where they can designate an individual to vote. A US citizen, resident and registered to vote in Colorado, at least 18. And then here's who, who, who gets to vote locally. Property owners, again, there's about 400 of them within the bid. Any business that holds a leasehold interest in those properties can vote. And then residents who live within the bid boundaries. So think about buildings like Alpine Bank Crossroads Building upstairs. There are some residences up there. And so they're impacted by what the bid does. So they get a vote as well. And that'll, that'll be on the ballot, ballot November 7th to see if the voters approve bids funding, funding continuing through 2041. Okay. So that's my recap. Any questions on any of that?
Excellent questions, council. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have, I guess, three topics that I want to share with you. One is the question on, it seems some of your activities are similar as in marketing as visit Durango. And how do you really distinguish your activities from this visit Durango? The next one is you mentioned downtown's next step and your role in it. And seeing where, how this concept develops, but I really hope that you take a more active role. Because if we wait until the concept at your perceived concept level is there, we would have spent maybe 1.2 million dollars for studies and design and the whole work through it. So I would like to hear more from the businesses, especially since there was this letter of 75 business owners. And what their thoughts are and somehow hear back from you on that topic. And, and then on the beautification. I around Christmas, New Year, you, if you travel, you come some, sometimes in beautiful little towns and they have flowers on Main Street and lights everywhere. And I think we have a beautiful tree in bucket park that always lay up. But maybe there's opportunities to do something really beautiful and it may be bid in combination with visit Durango or bid by itself would be have some food for thought on what we can do better.
Yep. Tim, real quick, what's your total budget for 2023?
So for 2023, it's about 320K and it's very comparable for 2024.
So I mean, we're not talking oodles noodles of money.
Correct. Okay. Well, let me, let me just take a quick shot at responding to those. So great question about visit Durango and bid. You know, visit Durango's changed kind of how they do things as we've gotten into the concepts of sustainable tourism. And there used to be an unwritten rule or partnership between the organizations where bid would do the promotions within hours drive of Durango and they would handle everything else. And as that organization has evolved, and I think this is a good thing. It's a good thing, right? There's more revenues and there's more that they can do. They do have more of a focus here in town on, on things. And so how I would respond, Councilor Bosman's is that we, we partner with them all the time. So we're not doing the exact same thing. So example, the event marketing grants that they give out, I sit on that committee and help, help evaluate those and bring the knowledge that bid has of how the best events are run to them. The Durango Arts Week that they just did, another kind of inward focus, for lack of a better term promotion. We sat on that planning committee. We worked with them on July 4th. So a lot of those are around events, but give you a little flavor of how we're trying to work together and, and not do the same thing. There, there are programs that bid can run that we run and there's programs that they can run that they run best. And, and we try to work together on them. So I hope that makes sense. Beautification, yeah, great idea. The bid has managed a holiday decorating contest because I can't go out and buy. I don't know how many lights we would need to string them all across Maine and all the permits to go across Main Avenue. But we work with businesses to encourage them to decorate their storefronts. We do that tree in Buckley. That's us. I hire a crane. I don't actually climb up there, but I get a crane to help me hang those lights. Eagle crane. Thank you, Eagle Crane. And then, you know, the city does the lights year round on the tree trunks down there and then also hangs wreaths on it, on a bunch of those poles too. So there's still room for it to get bigger and better. And I love that idea of partnering with visit Durango because they have another inward focused program, Holiday Station, where they're really kind of grabbing events and promoting them broadly to visitors and locals, but there's probably some room for some of that stuff that you're suggesting. And then lastly, on downtown's next steps, I've, I've been involved in that personally and our organization has since the beginning, since we started. So I understand what you're saying. Studies cost money, right? And so there's some frustration there. What, what I can tell you is that we're intimately aware of the concerns that the, some of the businesses in downtown have expressed around changes in parking, right? And, and access, right? Do, do we have enough room with bulb outs on the corners for our trucks to make turns, right? And there, there's some other things as well, to be sure. But in short, trying to, trying to sum them up. Those are the main concerns and, and to us, those, those concerns have to be addressed, but that doesn't mean we should put the brakes on the process. And in order to figure out what, what are we really trading to create more space for pedestrians and business? We've got to do the detailed design and then it gets into costs. So it, I, I get your point. I don't know what else that the bid could do at this point to to, to, to weigh in. We think it's worth continuing to explore. I guess that's our, that would be our statement. That makes sense.
No, I appreciate that. I apologize. It's unnoticed. I'm not, I'm not smart. It's technology wise. Now it's, it's just the conflicting message sometimes. At council and how as a bit you represent.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, there's like a thousand businesses. They don't agree on everything. You guys know, y'all deal with this all the time. And so we're trying to thread the needle and find the sweet spot that will work for most of them. And so certainly there are a set of businesses that would like that to stop. There are others who have said it's worth exploring and some who have said, let's just close Maine down and make it full pedestrian, right? So we're in the middle on that and we're aware of the concerns and we think the process should continue. And let's see some real detailed designs for specific blocks where we can really then look at pros and cons. And that's the point where bid would say, okay, this seems good. How do, how do we fund it? Or this has major flaws and it's got to change.
Yeah, I, I apologize, but the, what I was hoping for is that you don't take a position on whatever the majority is, but just represent the businesses. Whether it's 90% says four and 10% says. Yeah, let me take this.
No problem. Well, go ahead, Gilda. Thank you, Tim. Of course, you know how I feel about next steps. But my question is, okay, so the bid mill levy, according to your paperwork here, you say it's going to increase by 5%. Okay. So we had a meeting with the county and they, they're only estimating like, what, a one, one to 2% increase in everything like.
Yeah. So this, yeah. So this gets into our 2024 budget, right? So that's in the packet too. And the primary revenue driver, it's not a lot of money. 329K, but we lean it's 80, 90% mill levy. And so I get an evaluation notice from the county assessor that looks at those 400 properties and says, here's the value that we've put on them, that the, the, those owners will pay in their taxes in the coming year. And it's 11% higher than what it was in 2023. And so that's why I'm projecting a little increase. So it might just be the specific properties and not the whole county.
I understand that now. Thanks.
Yeah. So the, I'll just jump real quick to the, the revenues for 2024, 329K, a little increase in our, our, our property taxes, our mill levy, we can make a little more off those events that we manage. We're able to bring in a little bit of funds there. Those rewards programs are slated for a small decrease in funding, but it's, it's like $500 when you look at the actual dollars and we'll still be able to bring in sponsorships to let us run those programs. Ambassador program will be the same and other income is super minor and will be the same as well. Our expenses, a small increase overall, 3%. There's small raises for the two main staff. So a 2% increase in our personnel and related costs. Our admin and operations costs just up a fraction at 1%. Our event expenses are down by 5%, but dollar wise, I think that's like a thousand dollars. It's fairly small or 500 bucks. Our marketing and communications expenses up 4% and our visitor and information and beautification expenses up nine. And that's primarily to allow us to kind of catch up on our hourly rate of pay on our ambassadors. Few years ago, we were pretty good. And with what y'all have heard in here and what you guys know, man, people are making a lot more money on those hourly wage jobs and we've got to catch our wages up. So we're investing more there. And then that just produces a small net income of just under 2,500 bucks. We do have reserves funds, which don't show up on this budget, but we do save money for three months operating. If the bid ever goes away, we've saved money to, to cover the cost of that election. And then we have money just in a fund called special projects. So something comes to us outside of our budgeting that we should put some money to, we're able to do that. Last few comments. So what does that budget allow us to do? So under our marketing programs, we'll operate two rewards programs, we'll do North Main District promotions, we'll, we'll look at events and, and focus promotions on those. We'll update those maps and directories and brochures, maintain our website and our social media. We'll do some event sponsorships as well. Under communications, we'll continue that weekly communication piece, accurate, timely, brief information for business owners, super valuable. Under events, we'll manage the same four events next year. Visitor information, we'll continue that ambassador program, we'll work at least 1,000 total hours and we'll have at least 10,000 positive interactions. We'll continue our partnership in the welcome center. We'll continue our beautification efforts as well. So that's all I got. I know we're pressed for time.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing the time. Jessica was just saying the same thing to me. We have one more presentation. So we'll quick, I just had a couple of things I wanted to just comment on for you, Tim. First of all, I just want to say that historically, and since I've been on council, I really appreciate bids voice on issues that impact our businesses downtown, you know, from the bump outs to downtown next steps. You guys have been integral in all of that and it, it makes a difference. So I wanted to thank you for that. And I also appreciate you updating us on bid stance with downtown next steps and your desire to continue moving forward with the looking at that. You know, the majority of council has said that we are supportive of looking at that as well and looking at, you know, the concept of wider streets, better pedestrian flow, better bike flow, safer. Those are issues and, and also at the same time, improved infrastructure while, while we're doing it, it has to happen at some point. It can't be delayed for that, that much longer in our community. This, you know, piping is sold and things like that. So these are things that I think the majority of council is interested in, in exploring further over time. So I appreciate bid, you know, supporting, supporting that, looking at it. And I also recognize exactly what you said about the turning radius. And I know that we had talked about in some of our plans, even actually putting out cones so we could test that. And I think that that's still going to be an important step. We of course want the businesses to support this much more than the majority. We want a lot of the business, this, we want this to work for our community if we, you know, if it, if it happens. Another question I had for you is in supporting programs, I'm just wondering, just very quickly, I hope you are helping us support the SEP parade and ceremony.
Yes, I've talked with Ellen Baber's community events today. She's working with Commander Stacy. And bid will help communicate what's happening with that. And there are several other events that week that will close parts of downtown for various periods of time. And so we'll help communicate that to businesses and to the public.
Wonderful. Any other quick closing comments, council? Great. Okay. Tim, I looked at your budget and it's really good. You do a lot with what you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilda.
Thanks so much, Tim. Great. We will move on now for residences at Durango presentation with Eva. So we're going to try to keep this to no more than 20 minutes if possible. Sorry, we've gone over a little bit.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Eva Hinson, Housing Innovation Manager. Here this afternoon to talk about residences at Durango. This is an informational update, which is the project formerly known as the Best Western located off of US Highway 160 West. It'll include a financial update regarding forthcoming modifications to the financing structure regarding $4 million in federal grants. Timeline of the project, including issuance of building permits and construction commencement. It'll also include information about deployment of these grant funds as a loan structure to keep the development on track to create 120 affordable units in Durango and helping achieve council's housing goals. This initiative aligns with several of council strategic plan goals, including affordability and economic opportunity as well as enhanced livability and sense of place, along with financial excellence and high performing government. I'll provide a brief overview of the project. We'll talk a little bit more in depth about the modification to the financing structure, timeline and next steps. Aside from staff, our city attorney's office, our assistant city attorney, as well as TWG Development's legal counsel have been heavily involved in collaboration on these documents with review, along with staff's review for this project. And Winthrop and Weinstein, Jason Harvey and John Preston are also on questions that council may have regarding these administrative technical documents. So a little bit of background about the project, the city activated the purchase back in 2021, before the housing innovation division started. They put the hotel under contract and then released a request for proposals seeking an affordable house. From there, the city went through the bid process and selected TWG Development LLC. They are a real estate firm and development company based out of Indianapolis, Indiana. But they do have projects and a presence in Colorado. From there in February of 2022, you may think back, I was fairly new in my role, just a couple of weeks into my position. And we brought before council, a couple of different things. We did a resolution to assign that real estate contract over to the developer. So the city basically took a step out of that transaction and does not own the hotel currently. This is a for-profit developer project. From there, just a little bit more detail, it is an adaptive reuse. And when I say that, it is the first hotel to residential conversion in the state of Colorado to utilize low income housing tax credits for this project. We are the first. So we're learning a lot by doing in this project. So they're going to rehabilitate the existing 72 rooms that are at the hotel. They will also construct two additional buildings behind the hotel to create 48 new units. Again, a robust community amidst type of units. So this won't just be studios or one bedrooms. This will actually have studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedroom units, which is critical because we have families, we have, you know, partners, we have dependents, we have children, we have things that need bigger units than just studios and one bedrooms. So this project will have a spectrum of those units targeting various households at or below 60% area median income. And some of the units will also hit 30% area median income or less. What that breaks down to for council, we try and stick with two-person household whenever I'm reporting out for, for you and for the public. But for 30% area median income, it's about $24,960. That's about $12 an hour. So someone can earn a little bit less, somebody could earn a little bit more. And then for the 60% area median income for a two-person household at $49,920, that's about $21, $22 an hour. Again, somebody could earn a little bit less, somebody could earn a little bit more in the household. And then those rents are reflective on the slide for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. You can see this will hit a lot of the target need that's addressed in the needs analysis report that was published back in 2020, that is a regional approach as well as our three-year workforce investment strategy that was published last June, targeting the real need to hit that inventory. And this project will do that with those 120 units. A little bit of background about the structure for, the financing structure for this particular project. Several community engagement components have been part of your process with resolutions. We've done private activity bond allocation for 21, 2022 and 2023, the city's allocation for this project. And La Plata County also took a formal action to allocate their private activity bond allocation to this project, which will equillate to about $18 million, along with the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority's bond allocation to help contribute to this project. In the fall of 2022, the city was awarded funding from the congressional direct spending that was backed by Senator Hickenlooper and Senator Bennett for the residences of Durango and the city was awarded $3 million as a grant that is administered by the Housing and Urban Development Office, known as HUD, which provided pivotal funding gap that could be used for either the acquisition cost, the acquisition of this hotel for TWG was $7 million. It also could be used for construction costs if needed. Also in the fall of 2022, the city pursued the House Bill 211271 Affordable Housing Development Incentives Grant, known as IHOA, and were awarded $1 million in grant funds to help offset the development fee costs and construction costs. So that totals $4 million in grant money for this project and their federal funds. And in the particular case for this project, that can be taxable. that can be taxable income for a for-profit developer. So here we are getting federal funds as grants, and then the federal government would tax those funds that would impact the project negatively. It would result technically in reducing the available low-income housing tax credits by 1.6 million, which would further result in a reduction of federal tax credit equity of 1.4 million. Again, to stress, this would negatively impact the project's financing and prevent the project from moving forward. To walk you through the steps that we just talked about with the various components that city has already taken formal action on. This is a creative structure that is legal. It's a mechanism that is fairly common in low-income house tax tax credit projects, often using a nonprofit partner. Or in our particular case, we've structured the arrangement to modify this as a loan by the city, who is a tax-exempt partner in this. By doing so, this evening at your regular meeting, staff will be bringing before you for consideration a resolution allowing that restructure and modification of the financing structure. We did not have to restructure our grant agreements. So we've confirmed that with HUD, we've confirmed that with DOLA, that this does not change those grant agreements that are already in place. So the scope will remain the same. It will impact the project positively by all the $4 million being into the project costs directly by this structure. And therefore, allowing the issuance of building permits this month. One of the things I wanted to just highlight, the city has opted into Proposition 123. The city's baseline commitment to build affordable units over the next three years is 184 units. Building permits issued to create 120, 20 units in this particular project at Residences at Durango will check our box for our baseline commitment at 65%. More than halfway there for our commitment with one project for Proposition 123. We do have a groundbreaking event scheduled for Friday, October 27th at 10:00 a.m. That'll be onsite at the location. And I'll leave that for some questions if you have any.
Thanks so much, Council.
I've got a lot, but I'm I'm gonna save everybody the time. Just my, I guess my biggest one, I think it's silly that the federal government gives out grants and then says we have to take 40% back for for taxes. That seems counterintuitive. However, if are we acting as a pass-through for that grant money to the developer? Or I read the documents and it looks like we're going to charge 1% interest rate. So are we going to receive that $4 million at 1% back over time, over 40 years?
So some of that's under, first of all, let me thank Jim Martin for doing all the heavy lifting and the legal work behind making sure everything is on the up and up. And thank the Community Development Department for being so transparent about this. There are some questions as to whether or not they need to even come to Council for approval to train this, to change the structure of this loan, because it doesn't change the bottom line of what your output is. To answer your question, it is a very complex lawyer-driven way to avoid paying the federal government taxes. It is technically a loan to put us in that box where we don't have to, the developers don't have to pay those taxes to think about more money into the project. And there are several options as we go forward as to how the loan gets paid back. There are options for the the company that's building the project, whether they want to pay the back or or buy the loan out at certain periods of time that are structured over the future. That's my level of understanding. If you want more detailed explanation, I'm gonna have to get Jim up here for it.
Or TWG is on the on the line as well on the Zoom call.
But we've probably got 30 hours of human time in this thing, making sure that we're being transparent and doing everything exactly the way we're supposed to. So as much money can as possible can go back into the project.
Right. And yeah, kudos to all involved. I mean, I mean, just reading through the the packet of information is daunting, to say the least. And it looks like if they bought out the there was a 250 opt-in or feet. Yeah, anyways, there's.
It's very complex. And I will tell you in more efforts to be transparent, I mean, this is a, there are companies out there in the in the country right now that are accumulating tax credits, and they're going to sell those tax credits. And that's big, high-level business, and they will make profit on this. But that doesn't directly affect us as Durango. Everything we're doing is exactly on the up and up, and we're putting more money into our project this way.
So this just allows us the opportunity to really make sure that all $4 million of this grant money is going towards the project and not towards any other ancillary.
It was all always going towards the project. It's just a question of how much of it got diverted into paying taxes on the company that's actually building or the company that's actually building the project paying taxes as opposed to going into the project. And of course, you know, originally, we're just going to give or donate, but put the 4 million into the project. Now, as it's structured, there is some potential that we get some of the money back because we structured it as a loan. And we just don't know the answers to that because we don't know what option they're going to select as we go forward in time. But it puts the city in a much better position on all accounts.
Will will anybody from our team have to be part of that reporting mechanism back to the feds for this $4 million? Or is that going to be on TWG?
So the only requirement that we will still have with staff is our reporting requirements for the grant Department of Local Affairs, as well as the Housing and Urban Development Office. But ideally, once we structure and get these agreements executed, we'll be able to deploy the $4 million money and actually get those funds out of the housing budget and for the purpose that those were intended and appropriated for and going towards those construction costs and the acquisition costs. So really, the only part for us is still just those reporting requirements that we'll have.
Okay, I just want to make sure you guys aren't going to be burdened with all of that. You know, it's a lot. Who's going to be on the deed for the property? But is that going to be TWG? Would that be will be the ones that technically own the property?
I've I've got all of those documents. I would need to just.
We don't have to answer it now. I just I guess it's more of like, you know, who is going to retain ownership of the property as we move through this process?
TWG would retain ownership.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some questions, but this agenda item in the form of a resolution is coming up during the regular City Council meeting. So if it's okay with Council, I'll keep my comments for the five-minute block at that point in time.
No further questions. Thank you so much for the update. We appreciate it. Okay, I think that that is it. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.